The meeting would please come to order. Hello, everyone, and thank you for joining us. Today is Thursday, March the third. And we want to thank everyone who was on join us virtually for this evening's meeting. Just as a reminder for anyone who would like to have public comment, there is a Google Form signup link in the chat. Public comment will take place after all non legislative business. This time we will have our opening prayer by Akira Granado.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Amen.
This time we will recite the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
Under God.
One nation.
Individual.
God. Indivisible. Liberty and justice.
And justice.
Please call for the role.
Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman Darby.
Present.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Fields.
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy. Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Field.
Present.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Present.
Councilman Spadola.
Present.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Here.
President Congo.
Here, and also, I'm already built. Councilwoman Gray and Councilwoman McCoy did ask to be excused.
So noted, President Congo. That is ten present and two absent.
Thank you. Meeting of the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
February seventeen, twenty twenty-two, City Council met in regular session virtually with remote participation and above date at six thirty PM. President Ernest M. Congo the second presiding. The opening prayer was done by Akira Granado, Deputy City Clerk. The pledge of allegiance was recited by City Council. The following members responded to the call of the role. Councilmembers Gray, Oliver, Harley, McCoy, Johnson, Nathan Field, Cabrera, and Walsh, and Council President Congo, for a total of nine. Absent with leave, Councilmembers.
That the minutes be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
Be accepted as written.
It's from popping.
Second.
And second that the minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carry. This time we have the committee reports.
January thirteen, twenty twenty-two, present members of Council City of Wilmington, ladies and gentlemen, we are Community Development, our Link Planning Committee by virtual meeting with remote participation to who was referred as to number two to ordinance number twenty-one zero zero seven in title. In order to cement chapters five and thirty-four of the city code to require notice and an opportunity to appeal violations related to the failure to obtain a business license to operate a residential rental dwelling unit prior to imposition of a civil fund. I've given this substitute ordinance careful study and recommend counsel accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present, Councilwoman Cabrera, Councilman Field, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilwoman Fields, Councilman Spadola, Councilwoman Darby, and President Congo.
I move that committee report BBC recorded and filed.
Second.
It's been probably moved in a second that we report BBC recorded and filed on the question. I'm sorry about that. It's been probably moved in a second that that report we receive recorded and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carry.
February sixteen, twenty twenty-two, ladies and gentlemen, we are Public Works and Transportation Committee by virtual meeting with remote participation towards we refer ordinance summer twenty-two zero zero one in title. In order to approve the removal of a portion of North Pine Street located between E-six and E-seven streets from the official city map. I've given this ordinance careful study and recommend counsel accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Gray, Councilman Field, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Walsh, Councilwoman Fields, and Councilman Spadola.
I move that committee report BBC recorded and filed.
Second.
Probably move in second that report BBC recorded and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry.
February sixteen, twenty twenty-two, ladies and gentlemen, we are Public Works and Transportation Committee by virtual meeting with remote participation towards we heard ordinance number twenty-two zero zero four in title. In order to enact certain parking regulations, I've given this ordinance careful study and recommend counsel accordingly. Respectfully submitted, those members present, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Gray, Councilman Field, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Walsh, Councilwoman Fields, and Councilman Spadola.
I move this committee report BBC recorded and filed.
Second.
This one probably move in a second that report BBC recorded and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carry.
Mr. President, that completes committee reports.
Okay, thank you. This time we have our city treasury report.
March third, twenty twenty-two. Total investment, four hundred and eighty-four million, three hundred and forty, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Total cash on hand, twelve million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Grand total, four hundred and ninety-seven million, sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-five cents submitted by Duane Sins, City Treasurer.
I move the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
Probably move in a second that the treasury report we receive, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carry. I accept the motion to move to accept all non legislative business.
So moved.
Second.
It's been probably move in a second to accept all non legislative business on the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carry. At this time, we do have a few sympathy resolutions that I would, that I would acknowledge from all of council, sympathy resolution for Brian A. Mitchell, Senior. From Councilwoman Harley, a sympathy resolution for Noreen Maddox-Johnson. From Councilwoman Oliver, sympathy resolution for Mills Wilson. And from Councilwoman Walsh, sympathy resolutions for James Marion Senior and Joan Oliver. Also to be added to the agenda results, recognition resolution for Sheila O. Callahan. Sponsored by Councilman, Councilman Field, and a sympathy resolution for Wilson James Junior by, sponsored by Councilman Brigitte Fields. At this time, if there is anyone who has signed up for public comment. I'll see where anyone has signed up. WITN is telling me that no one has signed up. Few more seconds.
Mr. President, we do have a, a public comment that just popped up.
Okay. Okay, so this time, is it Christian? Can I be talking on WITN? Will our?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right, again, just for anyone who is going to give public comments, there is a Google Form signup link in the chat. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. And please do not address any council members directly, but please direct your comments towards me. We will be keeping a, a time clock for the three minutes. We'll give you a thirty-second reminder when you had thirty seconds left. We'll give you a reminder when you have thirty seconds left. Christian Willauer.
Good evening, and thank you, Council President Congo and Council, Council members for the chance to speak. I just wanted to thank council for considering tonight the ordinance to add fines to people who, who have rental properties that don't register them and to provide time for when they're notified to register that rental property. I think this is legislation that makes sense from a lot of different reasons. When you have a business in Wilmington, there's a requirement to have a business license, and it just makes sense to require people who have the very important job of renting housing to residents of the city of Wilmington. Just to make it clear to them that it's very important that they obtain a business license. And also adding these, this system for penalties makes it more likely that people are going to be, be registering their rental properties, which is important from an enforcement perspective from the city of Wilmington to make sure that people are living in housing that is under the enforcement of L and I. And so it just, it's very important that we ensure that people are living in good quality housing, and I want to thank council for your consideration for this important legislation. And I just wanted to say again, my name is Christian Willauer, and I live in the city of Wilmington, and also I'm here as a volunteer with the Homes Campaign. And the Homes Campaign is working with a lot of residents to advocate for safe, healthy, and affordable housing in the city of Wilmington. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willauer, and thank you for everything that you and the home campaigns brings to our city. Thank you so much. Just want to make sure I'm not going to miss anybody. All right. All right, thank you for everyone again who was joined us virtually. I don't see anyone else who has signed up for public comment. So this time we will go into legislative business. Councilwoman Harley.
Yes, Mr. President, I have a, a resolution to present on your behalf. Resolution twenty-two zero ten, Agenda zero one four zero, whereas on January twentieth, twenty twenty-two, the City Council, as required by section two dash one oh one of the City Charter and section two dash three four of the City Code, formally declared that an at-large councilmatic position was vacant as of January seventh, twenty twenty-two due to former council member at large Rashima J. Dixon's resignation. And whereas pursuant to City Charter, section two dash one oh one, when such a vacancy occurs between general elections, it is the duty of City Council to appoint a resident of the city and a member of the same political party as a council member who resigned to fill the vacancy until the next succeeding general election held in the city. And whereas pursuant to City Code, section two dash three four, the Committee of the Whole of City Council has recommended Albert Mills to fill the vacated at-large councilmatic seat. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that the Council appoints Albert Mills, a duly registered member of the Democratic Party residing in the city of Wilmington to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of former council member at large Rashima J. Dixon until the next succeeding general election held in the city.
I move this resol- resolution BBC recorded and filed and adopted by yea and a vote.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved in a second that that resolution BBC recorded and filed, adopted by yea and a vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President, this resolution appoints Albert Mills pursuant to City Charter, section two dash one zero one and City Code, section two dash three four, to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of former council member at large Rashima J. Dixon in accordance with the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole of City Council.
Yeah, I'll see any hands raised. Sure. Do see one hand. Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes, Mr. President, I just wanted to say that I was very pleased to see that our residents who came through and who put themselves out there to participate in the pro, in the process, we had twenty-one applicants, of which nineteen were qualified, and eighteen that went through the process. So it was really good to see and, and hear from them, to see their resumes and to hear about their community engagement. So for those that didn't make it, because there was only one position, I really do encourage them to sign up, run for office, seek political office again, and run for a seat, because a lot of you brought so many things to the table, and just your community engagement as well. It was just very heartening to see all the participants. Obviously, we can only pick one, but I just want to say thank you to all who did participate. It was definitely a process, and it was, you know, a decision that had to be made. We welcome Al Mills. We'll vote him in this evening, and I know he will do well for our city. But again, just wanted to thank everyone who put themselves out there to participate.
Okay, thank. Councilman Spadola.
Thank you, Council President. I agree with Councilmember Cabrera's sentiments. There were probably five that would have been nice to pick up from the group that applied, but of course, we could only pick one. And I'm very happy for Mr. Mills to join us. The city has a lot going on right now with, you know, as we exit the pandemic, dealing with a structural deficit, violence on our streets, which seems to have gotten better, knock on wood. But we need, you know, reasonable people on council, and I think Al will be a steady hand to join us and help guide us and move the city forward. So I look forward to confirming him in tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. And for all those who did apply for this seat, and there were some very qualified folks to, to who applied for this position. I, I think they should look at Mr. Mills as a as the, almost like the little Energizer Bunny. He never gave up. He had this in the bag a couple of years ago, but somebody decided to play with a different bag. And he just continued pushing away and pushing away until he finally got this council seat or a council seat. I wish him the very best of luck, and I wish our entire council luck with having him on our council. And yes, some of the folks that applied really had some outstanding resumes. I want to give them some hope too, that as Ms. Cabrera said, go out and run in a campaign. I will guarantee you, you will not receive any of the questions you got asked during that whole process. So have faith in the people in the streets that ask the right questions and, and judge very fairly and kindly to those running for office. So best of luck, Mr. Mills. We welcome you to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to repeat everything, every of my council, previous council members have said. It's just like to echo everything they said. Just welcome him aboard. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Johnson.
Yes, I want to, again, just reiterate the welcome to Mr. Mills. We are looking forward to having you as a part of our dynamic council. I believe there is some thought that you will be on the Finance Committee, so welcome to as well as we're getting ready to go into budget season, so we're going to have a lot of work for you right away, but I know you're not a stranger to hard work. You're not a stranger rolling up your sleeves, so I'm looking forward to serving with you on this council, and I know you'll serve the entire city very well.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Fields.
Yes, I'd just like to say, you know, I don't want to, I'm not going to repeat what my colleague said, but I just want to say congratulations to Al Mills. And nevertheless, it may have been a lot of qualified individuals, but you won, you won your, like, you won your seat, and I just hope that you can, you will continue to run for this, this seat that you're in now. Congratulations again. I know you will do well, and like my colleague said, we have plenty of work to do. So start rolling up your sleeves and let's get ready to work again. Congratulations, and you are well qualified. So thank you for applying. That's all, Council President. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I also would like to congratulate you, Mr. Mills. You come from a family who has always had the best interests of Wilmington in your hearts. It's going to be great to work with you. I also want to thank everyone who applied. I want to encourage you to, to stay active. You know, our city needs you. And I do especially want to thank our council staff, especially Marshall Bassanite just for helping this process to be as seamless as it was. It's not an easy process for any of us, but our staff really came through for us, and so kudos to our staff. Thank you for everything that you have done for us. Turn back to the sponsor.
Yes, I do. Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I too want to just echo all the words, all the comments that have already been stated by the council, and I want to thank Mr. Mills for taking some of my hard questions that I had, that I asked him, along with some of the other individuals that submitted resumes. A lot of the questions that I had for him, I, I definitely, I'm like the answers that he gave. And I too want to welcome him to the council, and I am looking forward to working with you. And I'm looking forward to us moving the city of Wilmington forward together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Clerk, please call for the role.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yay.
Councilwoman Oliver, yes. Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Ten yays and two absence.
Declare adopted. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of administering the oath of office to Mr. Albert Mills?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in a second. The council suspend our rules for the purpose of swearing in Mr. Mills. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. The oath of office will be administered virtually by Judge James Handby on WITN. Are we all set?
We are all set.
All right, thank you. Judge Handby, you have the floor. Thank you for joining.
Thank you, Council President and members of council. It is my honor to take part in this tonight. I've known Albert for a number of years. In my role as a justice of the peace and his work with the youth. And I know that he will be an asset to the city of Wilmington as a councilman. Mr. Mills, are you prepared to take the oath of office?
Yes, I am, Your Honor.
I believe you have a Bible there with you.
Yes, I do.
All right, if you would place your hand on the Bible and raise your other hand. There you go. No, the other way. Other way. There you go. Very good. Say aye, repeat your name.
Aye, Albert Mills.
And repeat after me. Do proudly swear.
Proudly swear.
To carry out the responsibility.
Carry out the responsibilities.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of City Council Member at Large.
City Council Member at Large.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Freely acknowledging.
Freely acknowledging.
That the powers of this office.
That the powers of this office.
Flow from the people.
Flow from the people.
I am privileged to represent.
I am privileged to represent.
I further swear.
I further swear.
Always to place the public interest.
Always to place the public interest.
Above any special or personal interest.
Above any special or personal interest.
And to respect the rights.
And to respect the rights.
Of future generations.
Of future generations.
To share in the rich historic.
To share in the rich historic.
And natural heritage of Delaware.
And natural heritage of Delaware.
In doing so.
In doing so.
I will always uphold.
I will always uphold.
And defend the constitutions.
And defend the constitutions.
Of my country.
Of my country.
And my state.
And my state.
And the city charter.
And the city charter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mills.
Okay. Woo-hoo.
All right, welcome, Mr. Mills.
Welcome.
Welcome, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Clerk, please place Councilmember Mills to the role.
Don't note it.
Is there a motion to return back to regu, to the regular order of business?
The move.
The move.
Second.
It's been moved in a second, second that council move, that council return to the regular order of business. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carry. Councilmember Darby.
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-one zero zero seven, Agenda zero zero two one, and notice to mend chapter five of the city code to provide for civil fines for owners of rental properties who fail to secure a business license to operate a residential rental property.
Mr. President, I have a substitute to present in lieu of that ordinance.
Substitute number three to ordinance number twenty-one zero zero seven, revision three to Agenda zero zero two one, and ordinance to mend chapters five and thirty-four of the city code to require notice and an opportunity to appeal violations related to the failure to obtain a business license. related to the failure to obtain a business license to operate a residential rental dwelling unit prior to imposition of a civil fine.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the enacting clause of the substitute ordinance and call for a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in a second that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and called for a yea and nay vote. On the question. Uh, no questions from council members? No comments? Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eleven yays and two absents.
Declare adopted. Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, Mr. President. Um, I have an ordinance present and call for the first and the second reading.
Ordinance twenty-two zero zero eight, Agenda zero one four one, in order to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract two-two-zero-two WDPS between the city of Wilmington and Municipal Maintenance Company for pump, valve, and miscellaneous mechanical equipment maintenance services.
Mr. President, I move this be known for the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Works Committee.
Second.
Mr. President, that was the first.
First, first reading of the ordinance.
I'm so sorry.
In order to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract two-two-zero-zero-two WDPS between the city of Wilmington and Municipal Maintenance Company for pump, valve, and miscellaneous mechanical equipment maintenance services.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move this be known for the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in a second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Works and Transportation Committee. You may continue, Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, I have another ordinance to present and call for the second reading. Ordinance oh one four two.
Ordinance twenty-two zero zero nine, Agenda zero one four two, in order to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract two-two-zero-zero-three WDPS between the city of Wilmington and Willard Electric Motor Repair Company, Inc. for water distribution system, electrical equipment management, and maintenance services.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract two-two-zero-zero-three WDPS between the city of Wilmington and Willard Electric Company Motor Repair Company, Inc. for water distribution system, electrical equipment, management, and maintenance services.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move this be known for the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in a second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance, uh, ordinance zero one four three.
Ordinance twenty-two zero ten, Agenda zero one four three, in order to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract two-two-zero-zero-one PWR between the city of Wilmington and DSC Solutions LLC for janitorial services at the municipal complex.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to authorize and approve two one-year extensions of contract two-two-zero-zero-one PWR between the city of Wilmington and DSC Solutions LLC for janitorial services at the municipal complex.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move this be known for the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Works Committee and Trans- uh, Public Works and Transportation Committee. And Mary Bell, could you give me the date of that, uh, Public Works and Transportation Committee, please?
Second.
President Congo.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want to wait till?
Yeah, go ahead.
Shouldn't it's moved? Thank you.
All right. It's been properly moved in a second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Would you like for me to respond, President Congo, or?
Yes, you may respond. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next Public, uh, Works Committee meeting is March twenty-first.
Thank you.
That will be all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harley.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-two zero zero one, Agenda zero one two four, in order to approve the removal of a portion of North Pine Street located between E-sixth and E-seventh Streets from the official city map.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for the yea and nay vote.
And someone's second, please.
That, that.
It's been properly moved in a second that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for a yea and nay vote. On the question.
Yes, Mr. President, um, this ordinance authorizes the removal of a portion of North Pine Street located between E-sixth and E-seventh Street from the official city map. And I just want to say that this particular, um, ordinance is a piece of a bigger, um, event and project that's going on primarily with Bancroft, uh, the new Bancroft School Campus. Um, this was, uh, already discussed through planning, uh, with the mayor, with the community involved. And the community understands that, um, removing this portion of North Pine Street um, is a part of this, um, project, again, the new Bancroft Campus.
Okay, thank you. And seeing no hands raised. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eleven yays and two absents.
Declare adopted.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for a third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-two zero zero four, Agenda zero one three six, in order to enact certain parking regulations.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for the yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and called for a yea and nay vote. On the question.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, um, this ordinance approves various parking regulations in the city, including the addition and removal of certain bus stop signs, mainly signs related to the Dart service change, um, that's connected with the Wilmington Transit Corridor improvement for Orange and King Street. Um, there were, um, a number of calls and inquiries made as it relates to, um, this project. But this is, um, an extension, again, of another project that had already been started. And this is pretty much the completion of them removing the signs.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no hands raised, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eleven yays and two absents.
Declare adopted.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance twenty-two zero eleven, Agenda zero one four four, in order to rezone three parcels of land located at the southeast corner of Fourth and Shipley Streets, that's Humble Park, from a zoning classification of O, open space, to a zoning class- classification of C-three central retail. First.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to rezone three parcels of land located at the southeast corner of Fourth and Shipley Streets, commonly known as Humble Park, from a zoning classification of O, open space, to a zoning classification of C-three central retail.
Mr. President, I move that it be known.
The reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in a second that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Planning Committee.
Mr. President, I have one, um, more resolution to present on your behalf.
Resolution twenty-two zero eleven, Agendas zero one four five, whereas in accordance with Section two dash one oh four, the city charter, city council shall provide for such committees as is deemed necessary. And whereas city council dees it to desirable to update the personnel assignments for standing committees for the one hundred and eighth council session.
I move this resolution BBC recorded and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Okay.
It's been properly moved and seconded that this, that this resolution BBC recorded, filed, adopted by a yea and a vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President, this resolution amends Resolution number twenty-one dash zero zero six to update the personnel assignments for the one oh eighth session of Wilmington City Council Standing Committees. Um, those changes are as, um, reads, public safety, adding council member Zanthia Oliver as vice chair. Um, health, aging, and disabilities, adding council member Brigida A. Fields as chair. And adding our new council member, um, council member Albert Mills to the public safety, um, committee. And adding Mr. Councilmember, um, Albert Mills to the health, aging, and disabilities. And adding council member Oliver to the Education, Youth, and Family Services. I'm just making sure that I didn't miss anything. It looks like that, that's all for this particular, um, resolution, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Um, seeing no hands raised, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Excuse me, uh, Mary Bell, just want to remind everyone to please mute your phones. Thank you.
Just for the record, Councilwoman Fields.
Fields, yes.
Thank you so much. Councilman Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eleven yays and two absents.
Declare adopted.
That's all I have for tonight, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
I thank you. Did Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman McCoy ask anyone to present on her behalf? If not.
I can, um, I can, um, present on behalf of Councilwoman McCoy, if that's okay. Mr. President.
Um, have, have you had a conversation with her?
No, I didn't.
No, okay, I haven't either, so I'm not sure.
One just hold it then?
Yeah, we'll just hold it.
Okay, no problem.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Uh, yes, yes, Mr. President, um, I have an ordinance to present, present and call for first and second reading.
Just one second. Ordinance twenty-two zero twelve, Agenda zero one four seven, in order to authorize and approve a service agreement between the city of Wilmington and Verizon Delaware LLC for N-eleven dialing service for Verizon's telephone exchange end-user subscribers.
First reading of the ordinance.
In order to authorize and approve a service agreement between the city of Wilmington and Verizon Delaware LLC for N-eleven dialing service for Verizon's telephone exchange end-user subscribers.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Uh, the, Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Thank you.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
But thank you very much, Mr. President. That concludes my items.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Field.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cabrera.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-two zero twelve, Agenda zero one four eight, whereas twenty-dollar Delaware C-three-one-four-two-A-one creates a health emergency commission that develops a public health emergency plan to be revisited every two years. The commission's original purpose included developing a plan that ensures that ninety percent of the population is covered by Health Alert Network.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that this resolution be received, recorded, and filed, adopted by a yea and a vote on the question.
Mr. President, um, I'm presenting the resolution this evening because it turns out, you know, as we have grown with technology and everything, that our nine-one-one system unfortunately has not. Um, so where, where you have majority, um, of the calls, people have cell phones now, at least seventy percent of the population has cell phones. Um, when the nine-one-one does, um, a reverse call to make you aware of a situation, an accident, anything that could be happening in your area, they're usually calling the landlines. Most people don't have landlines. So it's not set up to call the cell phones. So with this, what this resolution does, it actually makes it so that now you can have adopted where ninety po- ninety percent of the population, um, can get those reverse calls. Um, and it just makes it more efficient. Now, one of the things that brought this on was when there was that, um, that gas leak, uh, into the air by Crota, and they needed to let the residents know that they were not able to do so. Um, so that really sent out an alarm. So Representative Lambert and others are presenting this to make these changes, um, statewide. So we all, city council, uh, would like to support the efforts, um, of the state legislature and making sure that for safety reasons, um, that everyone is able to get, have access to a reverse nine-one-one call.
Okay, thank you. And seeing no hands raised. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
All right.
Who was that?
I was, I'm sorry, I was trying to hear if it come off the mute, and it wasn't coming off, but I'm voting yea, yes.
Thank you. And just for clarity, Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eleven yays and two absents.
Declare adopted. Councilmember Spadola.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Yes, I have a resolution.
Resolution twenty-two zero thirteen, Agenda zero one four nine, whereas pursuant to Section two-three-six-three of the city code, city council deemed it necessary and progress specified a requirement for review and approval of city sponsor grant applications or proposals, including authorization for expediting grant applications when necessary prior to council's approval by resolution. And whereas the Office of.
I mean, is that be known as the reading of the resolutions? That it be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and a vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that be known that that resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea and a vote. On the question. It's been properly moved and seconded that be known that that resolution BBC recorded, filed and adopted by a ye and a vote on the question.
This is a small grant, Mr. President, coming from the Supplemental American Rescue Plan Act for the Delaware Emergency Management Agency, an amount of thirty-six thousand dollars. There is a matching fund of thirty-six thousand dollars, but that doesn't have to come out of hard money right now because it had already been set aside a previous time in anticipation of getting this small grant. And it's for the Office of Emergency Management to help support the operation of the department.
Okay, thank you. And seeing no hands raised, please call for the roll.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yeah.
Councilman Field.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eleven yeas and two absent.
Declare adopted.
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will go into petitions and communications. Councilwoman Darby.
I have nothing for this evening, President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes, Mr. President, self and Councilwoman Harley, we are sponsoring an event at Howard for Del Tot to do a presentation for the Walnut Street residents and residents in the third and the fourth area district that will be affected by the Walnut Street project, which sounds like it's going to be a fabulous project, but we will be having a Del Dot, we will begin the presentation, there's been so much of virtual presentations, but we had a couple of constituents in the third and the fourth who requested that they would like to come to one publicly, so as it relates to the variants COVID being reduced coming down, Howard has allowed us to conduct a meeting in the auditorium, so it would be March the eighth from five to six, so I just wanted residents to know. And right now I can't think anything else. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harley.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I also want to piggyback off with Councilmember Oliver. I'm just shared regarding the project, the Walnut Street project. We're having two meetings, one on the, I guess you want to say the north side of the east side, which represent more of the third district, and we're also going to have a meeting on the fourth district side at Easy on Mount Carmel on Thursday. On Thursday, March, on the twenty-fourth, Thursday, March the twenty-fourth, at Easy on Mount Carmel at six o'clock. In addition to adding that topic to the agenda, we also are going to be talking about the new band Croft Campus, making sure that the east side community, they are up to date and just making sure that if they have any questions, that we can address them. And we're also going to have someone to come and talk about the housing initiative that is going on on the east side as well. And I just want to mention that Exelon merger gave a grant of eight hundred thousand dollars to build some efficient houses over on the east side, thirty-two houses over on the east side. And they're going to be at the meeting as well to share additional resource information with the residents on the east side. So we're looking forward to the community coming out to get information, to learn more about more resources. And we're just looking forward to individuals coming out, and again, that's Thursday, March the twenty-fourth, at Easy on Mount Carmel, starting at six o'clock. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Fields.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Council President. We have Dancing with the Stars, the location is at Wilmington Public Library. The time is from seven PM to eight-thirty PM, and it's going to be this Friday, March the fourth. Then Mayor Przyzki will paint the street green in honor of St. Patrick's Day on King Street. Feb, I mean, I'm sorry, Friday, March the eleventh, from eleven AM to twelve PM. And my ending quote, "I am not free while any woman is unfree, even when her shackles are very different from my own." Audrey Lord A., and this is in reference to Women's History Month quotes. Thank you, that's it, Council President.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Johnson.
Yes, everyone, I just want to remind the public that there is the March Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting, it's this upcoming Monday, March seventh at five PM. It is a quite busy agenda. As there are many action-packed items, especially regarding ARPA and a lot of budget items as we approach this year's budget season. So please tune in if you're interested. We have gotten a lot of public, a lot of been contacted by council. We've been contacted about ARPA and it still is not too late. That's the way, I think the best way to put it, and if you have a proposal, you have an idea, please send it either to the city council or the main city page at ARP ideas at Wilmington DE dot gov. So please get your proposal in there to see if your event qualifies. We also do have a new cover page as well for ARPA applications. And the money is still not always spent, so there's still time, so please get your application in there, and we look forward to seeing everyone. And I think I misspoke, Councilman Al Mills is not on the finance committee, committee yet, but hopefully he comes and he has interest and he'll want to join us officially. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Field.
Yes, Mr. President, this announcement is for, especially for any seniors in Luther Towers, Ingleside, or the Rodney Court area that have had concerns about crossing Pennsylvania Avenue due to the amount of time allowed on the countdown timer. It's only been ten, twelve, or thirteen seconds, but at the North Franklin Street Crossing, Del Dot has added an extra ten seconds, giving people twenty-two seconds to cross Pennsylvania Avenue, which is for several seniors that have brought this up, is almost double. So, and in short, anybody in that area looking to cross Pennsylvania Avenue, looking for a more convenient crossing, the North Franklin Street Crossing, the timing has been significantly extended, and I encourage people to use.
Uh, Councilman Field, I think you may have may have lost your last comments. Councilman Fields, may Field. Okay, we can, we can hear you now.
Okay, so I'm not sure, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
So I was, I was saying that for any seniors in the Luther Towers, Ingleside, or Rodney Court area that have concerns about crossing Pennsylvania Avenue due to the amount of time on the countdown timer, Del Dot has added ten seconds at the crossing on Franklin Street, which is more than double, almost double what it was before. So anybody looking for more time, for more, a safer or extended crossing should cross at the North Franklin Street Crossing to get from the Luther Towers area to the Ingleside area. That was, that was the comment that I made.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Cabrera.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, first, I would like to just remind everyone that it is March and it is Women's History Month. And I'm sure there will be plenty of activities taking place around our city where we can support women and acknowledge, you know, the champions, the leaders, and the ones that have paved the road so that women like myself and others could actually sit on this council and represent our city and represent others. So just keep that in mind for the month of March. Also want to announce that this Saturday, March sixth, the event MLK for Voices, which is the youth kind of competition where they are coming forth, and they wrote essays on how the power of how Martin Luther King and his legacy inspired them. There are some wonderful prizes that they're going to be getting. It's going to be held at four, at four PM, no, excuse me, at two PM, Sunday, March sixth, at the Baby Grand. So if you're able to go and attend and support them, that would be great. The prizes are like two thousand, a thousand five hundred dollars. So it'll be great to see our children involved. And today is Do More Delaware, so we want to remind folks there's a lot of nonprofits and organizations involved in Do More Twenty-four Delaware. So this is, the website is domoretwentyfourdelaware.org. So for the next twenty-four hours, this ends tomorrow, you have an opportunity to donate to one of your favorite charities or a charity that you know is out there doing things and making an impact in the community. So I'm getting ready to make my donation, so I hope that others will do the same. We are helping out the Community Communications Corporation, so if you find it in your heart to give a little donation there, that would be great. And of course, all the other wonderful nonprofits that are doing such amazing work in our city and that assist us as leaders by serving our constituents. And that is all for this evening, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mills.
Yes, Mr. President, if I may, I just wanted to thank you and the body of council for the confidence you all have put in me in reference to the taking this seat, and I just to say also that it's also Social Workers Month, National Social Workers Month, Brandon Proud, licensed master social worker here in the city. I'm looking forward to bringing that social worker voice to council and being a very productive member, and I look forward to working with you all and doing this amazing work for our city, and thank you all again.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spadola.
Nothing tonight, Ms. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President, just a couple of things. Excuse me, Maria already mentioned the event on Sunday for the kids, so this could be a really packed weekend for families or just people individually who would like to go out and do some things around our city. Tomorrow night starts the, the Art Loop once again. I think with all, a lot of the restrictions being lifted, there should be a lot more people out and about. I'm very jealous of all you people that can go almost anywhere that you want to. Make sure that you read the instructions for any place you might be going into, because they have every right to list restrictions that they may have in their shop or their restaurant. And many are going to require face masks, so make sure you have face masks with you if you go out. But you can also catch the shuttle for the Art Loop, which starts down in two hundred South Madison Street at five forty-five. That's an easy way for you to get around town and get to see more than you might if you were just walking. That's the Art Loop tomorrow. On March is usually kind of the holy grail for Irish Americans, since it is St. Patrick's Day in the middle of there. Also the birthday of one of the greatest kids ever made, and that's my daughter Robin. But Saturday is Parade Day, which starts at Fourth and King, and it starts at noon. St. Patrick's Day Parade has been going on for twenty-five, twenty-eight years now. It's always a lot of fun. It's a big fundraising event for St. Patrick's Church, which does many programs for the poor throughout our town. And if you get a chance to go down to see the parade, and I hope it is a very nice day, just go down by yourself, bring your family down, bring some kids from the neighborhood down. It's a grand day. And the other thing, another charity that is, it's probably one of the biggest charities we have, if not the biggest, for taking care of the poor in our town, and that is the Ministry of Caring. On April twenty-fourth, they're going to have their biggest fundraiser that they have every year, and that is their auction. Right now, they need lots of things, prizes to be able to auction off. If you can stuff envelopes, if you can be host or hostesses the day of the event, or help them put the event together. They need your help, so please call and volunteer at six five two five five two three. I would appreciate Channel twenty-two putting this up on their board also, because this is a charity that puts so much work and so much money back into our neighborhoods. And, you know, the motto of the ministry is basically, never treat the poor poorly, and they never do. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Just want to remind everyone that our next council meeting will be on March. Just want to remind everyone that our next council meeting will be in two weeks on Thursday, March the seventeenth, it will be the annual budget address that the mayor will present to all of us. I just want to remind all council members in the community that we will have budget hearings coming up very, very shortly. And especially the community members to please stay engaged, please let council know what you want in our budget. This is the time where council and the community and the administration need to work together to to figure out what's going to be best for our city so that we continue to grow and that everyone is included. So it's very important, especially for the community members, just to reach out to us, reach out to the administration, and let us know what you think should be a part of our, of our budget. Again, we can be reached on council at three zero two five seven six two one four zero. Your number is three zero two five seven six two one four zero. And it's also been brought to my attention from several members in the community, also a few council members, that they would like us to to always show our faces during council meetings. They're used to seeing us when we are know, before, before pre-COVID, they're used to seeing our faces, and they just wanted to, they just want to be able to see us. So I'm just going to respectfully request the council members who are able to, to please show your faces during council meetings. And also, this person called me, texted me, emailed me, I think they sent me a couple Facebook messages. They just want me to give them a shout out for their birthday, other than a very young councilwoman, Maria Cabrera. She, she celebrated her sixty-fifth birthday on March the fifth, so happy birthday, Councilwoman Cabrera, Feliz Campanias. All right, and with that, I will accept a motion.
No sixty-five there, honey, thank you. He's terrible, he's bad. Second.
And properly moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And you oppose? Motion carried. Thank you for joining us, everyone.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.